I would like, Susan? Yeah. I'd like to call the Tuesday, June 25th, 2013, regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education to Order. Present is Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convettito, Mr. Lou, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Ms. Iaccone, Mr. Fatavine, Mr. Carey, and Mrs. Brand. We're all in attendance. If I could have you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Going to student events, going to graduations, being able to recognize student achievement is the highlight, is the highlight of our meetings and our service on this board. Sometimes we spend too much time in other discussions and we do not get to congratulate both faculty and staff and students who make us proud every day by their achievements in school. We have three groups with several students that are here tonight. One represents the Dream Big Competition. Miranda Lean from Sherman and Lauren Gai or G? G, okay. Where are the two of you? Right, stand up so everybody can see you, as embarrassing as this might be. Let me, you can sit down if you want while I talk about you. Let me describe the program a little bit. Two Fairfield Elementary School students won a statewide competition for sharing their dreams of helping the environment when they grow up. The Big Dream Competition is sponsored by the Connecticut Higher Education Trust and it asks students in various grades across the state to submit creative pieces about their dreams for life after college. Kids in kindergarten through grade three turn in drawings while fourth and fifth graders write essays. Lauren G., a third grader at Osborne Hill School, and Miranda Lean, a fourth, Lean, if I pronounced that right? Okay, thank you. A fourth grader at Roger Sherman Elementary School were both winners in their age group. Lauren's entry says she hopes to create a clean energy to prevent oil spills and save the sea animals. Miranda's dream also has an environmental focus. In her essay, she says she wants to become a writer to compose books to encourage people to use greener appliances and energy sources. She said, "My dream of helping the environment came, was inspired by the smokestacks off the highway. When I saw how much we were polluting the air, I wanted to help." Twenty-two hundred submissions. And one boy and one girl from each grade in each county, we only have eight counties in this state, are winners. And so we are very fortunate to have two of them in our midst. Can I ask you to stand again so that we can recognize and give you a round of applause? Now, we don't just embarrass you, we also embarrass your parents if they're in the room at the moment because we know that they were main supporters of you throughout your whole life. So where are the parents for the two children? Please stand up so that we can also say thank you to them. Thank you. The second group we have, S-Marts, which is Energy Efficiency Contest. And we have Anna Patterson from Stratfield, is she here? Not yet?
Yes, she's right there.
Oh, okay, stay standing for a moment.
She's on crutches.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah, she's on crutches.
I wanted to say, did you borrow those from our board member? Because Jennifer has been spending time on crutches also. Karina McMahon, is Karina here? Karina McMahon from Burr? Connor Jones from Roger Ludlow Middle School, is Connor here? Good. And Michael Moran, McMahon from Tomlinson Middle School, he is here. So, so sit for a moment while I talk about you. Energize Connecticut, together with the Connecticut Energy Efficiency Fund and the Connecticut Light and Power and the United Illuminating Company, gave out its ninth annual S-Marts Student Contest for Students in grades K to 12, including four from Fairfield that we just mentioned. The contest gave Connecticut students the opportunity to showcase their energy smarts by saving energy by answering a grade-level specific prompts regarding energy-efficient and renewable energy technology. Students submitted entries in a variety of mediums, including poems, essays, graphs, and artwork. The ceremony was held in the old judiciary room, a quite lovely place of the Connecticut State Capitol, and attracted 100 students, parents, and energy efficiency supporters in celebration of their hard work. The Deputy Commissioner of Energy for the State of Connecticut was there, along with the First Vice Chairperson of the Connecticut Energy Efficiency Board. The S-Marts program and annual student contest plays an important role in helping students from kindergarten all the way through high school learn and appreciate the importance of energy efficiency and renewable energy, positioning them for a lifetime of environmentally conscious thinking and reminders to their parents to do the same. So could I have you stand up again so that we can give you another round of applause? And of course, to also recognize the parents that may be here of those four children, if they are, could I have you stand up as well so that we can recognize your own parental The third and last group has an individual here, I think there might have been two, but only one could come. The Secretary of State has a history citizenship award, and Brendan McMahon from Burr is here, who also won that award. Stand up so that we can recognize your second child. The contest asked fifth graders to write an essay or design a PowerPoint. Some of us couldn't design a PowerPoint. Design a PowerPoint presentation on one of Connecticut's most important historical events or inventions. Fourth graders were also asked to submit posters on how to be a good citizen, and Secretary of the State Denise Merrill then selected winners from each of Connecticut's five congressional districts. "I'm very impressed with these students and the grasp they have on Connecticut's history," the Secretary of State said. They also seem to understand that they can, they too can one day play an important part in history or create some fantastic invention that can save or improve our lives all over the world. Stratfield Elementary School fifth grader Owen Kenny took second prize in the fourth district in the essay contest. Burr Elementary School fifth grader Brendan McMahon, who's with us tonight, also won third place in the PowerPoint competition. And both decided to do their projects on Connecticut's history with the submarine. In the poster competition, Mill Hill Elementary School student Anastasia Mardovina was a third grade, a third-place winner. Her citizenship poster featured examples of how good citizenship is happening in Fairfield. So could I get Brendan to stand, the photographer for your brother, stand, sister, stand? So now, if I could have all of the award winners come up, just kind of stand in front for a moment so that we might get a picture, and if we're all lucky, perhaps it will be in one of our local newspapers as well.
Dave, you want to go up there and stand for a second? And the deal is that you have to smile long enough so that your parents can also take a picture.
Good job, guys.
Not for tonight's ceremony, but this weekend, the Aquaculture School also had what they called Aqua Cup Racers, where students built and then raced boats. And three of our students participated. And one got into the finals, but then I had another obligation to go to, so I wasn't able to stay for the final race. And so hopefully I'll find out eventually. But for the board members, I put the little brochure that they had at the table on Sunday at Captain's Cove in front of you so that you'd be aware of it. Okay, approval of the minutes, which is enclosure number one, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 11th, 2013. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Iaccone, Mr. Convettito, seconds it. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hands, say aye. It is unanimous. Okay. Board and committee reports, the Communications Committee will be reporting later on in the agenda. Are there any other comments that need to be made for pending an August decision or something? Mrs. Brand?
It may come up soon, I'm not sure when, but I thought it was a huge undertaking because the Goals and Advisory Review Committee did finish their work, so they have gone through the educational goals for the Board of Education, as well as the long-term goal. And I honestly think it was quite an accomplishment, and I also think, quite frankly, they did it in record time. It is included, the draft, in the minutes. We did not dissolve the committee, only because in the event that the subcommittee or the Board had some findings that they wanted them to go over again, then we would be available to do so. But please, I encourage you to take a peek. Thank you.
Okay. For the Board's purpose, as you know, this is an advisory committee of the Policy Committee. Their report will be given to the Policy Committee, and then if the Policy Committee wants to send it back to them for any revisions, they will. If not, the Policy Committee will accept it as presented and then move it forward to our Board discussion as their schedule shows. Our goal is to get this done so that it could get voted in the fall, and then the goals then would drive the plans for the next several years. Superintendent's report.
All right, I have included in your packet my draft of administrative regulations on curriculum. So just let me tell you where this, this all came from. Based on the discussion at the last Board meeting, it was a whole discussion about, you know, we know that the Board's Policy Committee was looking at Policy 6200, it's still on their agenda, but we really felt like we needed more clarity sooner than perhaps would happen at the Policy Committee. And Mrs. Brand, I believe, said, you know, they're going to be fairly detailed, maybe they should be regs. And I thought that was actually, you know, made some sense because they're fairly detailed and, you know, I can, I can get them out quicker because our staff really needs some guidance pretty soon. Because if we're thinking about doing anything next year in conjunction with our curriculum revisions, you know, we really need to get on this. And the staff internally, you know, clearly there's a need for greater clarity around this. This doesn't preclude the Policy Committee from looking at the policy, taking these and saying, "This is a policy." I mean, whatever the Policy Committee wants to do, it can still do, but we really needed, you know, some guidance on this so that we don't run into issues, you know, next year. So what I did was I drafted them and then I reviewed them. And administrative regulations are issued by the superintendent, so it's not on as an approval item for you. I'm looking for, you know, feedback or suggestions. Yeah. Yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is enclosure number two.
Right. So what I did was I drafted them and then we brought it to the Policy Committee at the last Policy Committee meeting. And there were some suggestions, I incorporated those into this. And so basically, what we've done is defined what do we mean by a planned pilot program? That's the wording that's in the policy, planned pilot program. What is it? What are some examples? So the staff knows what a pilot is and what it isn't. What the approval process needs to be before any piloting can take place. And under certain provisions, and there's a list of the, of what you need to put in your proposal, ultimately we'll actually probably turn that into a form or a template so that makes its way through the system as a common, a common form. And then if you flip over, you'll see the, the chain of command here, that it goes through certain folks, and all these individuals have to approve of the whole, the whole plan, and then it goes to the Curriculum Coordinating Council, and that's the Board's, you know, delegation, whatever. That's the council the Board has created essentially to comply with the statute on curriculum. And, and then there's notification requirements in there. And in the event that a pilot of a new textbook or core instructional program involves more than 30 percent of students in a grade level or course, or if it extends beyond a semester, then we would bring this to the Board of Education for approval. So that's a self-imposed thing that I'm asking to do. And that the quote-unquote "old textbook" would still be available, even if we're piling a, a new one. And that to ensure that, you know, that there's some continuity with this and that these regulations stay consistent with the Board's policy, that I would only change these upon reviewing them with the Policy Committee in advance. So I, you know, Jennifer may want to comment on this, but that was the goal, is to, is to immediately get some clarity to this and, you know, give us some assurances in the future that we have a procedure in place, which heretofore we have not had a procedure in place.
So does the Chair of the Policy Committee wish to make a comment?
I had notes on comments, and Dr. Title alluded to almost all of them, but I do think some of them bear repeating, which is that, again, off of Mrs. Brand's suggestion, after our first of lengthy meeting of really trying to hash out Policy 6200, when we came back to the Board and got Mrs. Brand's suggestion at the next policy meeting, Dr. Title had these ready for us. And really, we definitely had some suggestions for them, there were suggestions made by members of the public, but really appreciated that, you know, all of these were taken into consideration, that the administration is taking this seriously, and most importantly is not waiting either for our committee or the state to move ahead with this stricter definition, with these criteria, with these, with the checks and balances of this. And, you know, we were quite pleased with the content of this in the Policy Committee. And with the, I see the changes that have been made after our dialogue on it. And, you know, I like that something is in place now because we have curricula that are moving ahead with being reviewed, and that process should not be stopped because the Policy Committee is working its way through this. This is something immediate, it does not preclude the Policy Committee in the future taking steps to change the policy, but this is something that is in place right now. We were quite thrilled with it.
Any other comments from Board members realizing that this is an administrative regulation of the superintendent, no action is contemplated tonight? Mrs. Brand?
Please, just for, for my own sake, for a better understanding, it has pilot of a new textbook and where notification and participation are written, I believe that's the second page. Under notification and participation, now one, two, the third sentence, the pilot of a new textbook or core instructional program. I'm not sure I understand, when we, when we say instructional program, are we talking about an instructional methodology? Or are we talking about a change in curriculum?
A program, a program.
So it is a different, okay.
Right, okay. Funny, because we started talking about, what would an example of that be? Anna and I had this conversation. And so an example would be, would be this. Say we were implementing a new elementary science curriculum, or propose it, you know, we were in the process of developing one. A lot of times in elementary science, one of the, you have options. I mean, you could buy textbooks, and that's, you know, clear what a textbook is. In elementary science, frequently, what you purchase, sometimes is you do a unit by unit, you buy a program. You might even buy several programs. So you might say, you know, in second grade, we're doing, you know, dinosaurs, butterflies, and weather, and you buy, you know, an instructional program that goes for the dinosaurs, an instructional program, right? It's not a textbook, but it's the core program for the delivery.
It's in lieu of one.
Exactly. So that's the idea, not a different, you know, not a different instructional technique or not a supplemental resource, but if it's going to be the core program, essentially kind of like the textbook, only it's not really a textbook.
It's curriculum, though.
Well, it's a program, it's a resource. This is, this is about resources. So if this is going to be the resource that we're piloting to see how well it works with the proposed curriculum, and that's going to be the main resource for that course, you know, we're going to teach dinosaurs in second grade, and there's this kit from Foss that has the dinosaur kit, and that, they have these things, I'm not making this up. Maybe they don't have a dinosaur kit, but they, you know, weather, you know, something like that, that would be something that, you know, we wouldn't want someone to say, "Well, we don't have to get approval for that because it's not a textbook." But yet it's a textbook, it's, it's a core instructional program. That's a, that's the best example of it. I don't know how frequently that would come into play, but, you know, when we put a new curriculum in place, we don't, we're not always looking at a textbook, we might be looking at a program.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I actually want to say thank you because I didn't necessarily know that when I said this, it would generate two pages and perhaps a whole meeting and a lot of work. The only thing I would ask before, you know, this goes forward, to make sure that what we have when I say pilot a new textbook or a core program, that is again consistent with statutes, that we're not, because I know we vote on a textbook, so I just want to make sure when we entertain this that we're still in compliance. That's my only thought.
Mr. Lou?
Thank you. I guess, following up on what Mrs. Brand just finished saying, I guess I want to take it a step further, so, and this is great, that this is defining more about what a pilot is. But I just want to understand, so going forward, when you want to do a planned pilot program, will you be coming to the Board of Education?
Only if it meets the criteria, well, we'll notify the Board, but Board would approve it under the conditions on the second page, which would be if it involves more than 30 percent of the students in a grade level or course, regardless of duration. Or if it extends beyond one semester, regardless of the number of students. So if it meets either of those criteria, then we would bring it to the Board for approval.
Mrs. Cannelli?
I, I finished.
I just wanted to follow up on Mrs. Lou, so that, just to be clear, that it was, this has laid it out clearly enough that it's, so any pilot program, we're going to hear about it, it fits those criteria, and we actually will be approving it.
Okay. Mr. Lou?
I just, I'd, just for clarification, because, yes, now we're getting more definitions of pilots, but I think it's important to remember that that was where there is so much controversy, is because we do say in our policies that planned pilots are going to come before us. So I just want to make sure that we are sticking with that.
Yeah, our policy asks that the planned pirates, pirates, along with the dinosaurs, planned pilots will be reported to us on a regular basis. I think that's what the existing policy says. Mrs. Cannelli?
Right, just to, that our policy does not stipulate that we will be granting approval. What the policy states currently is periodic reports will be issued, delivered to the Board. There's actually nothing in there about approval of pilots. So this is very, this is far more far-reaching than anything in our policy or in state statute right now.
Mr. Convettito, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just, I have just two points through the chair to Dr. Title. On the first page, with your bullet points under the approval process, I would simply add one, an additional bullet point, which would be describe the costs of the pilot program and what the projected cost would be, should it be implemented as a full, should we decide to accept the pilot and change that program? Okay. And just on the third bullet from the bottom, schedule interim progress and final progress reporting and, and recommendations. I just think it wraps up a little, I mean, if you're going to come, if you have one of those that, you know, requires Board approval, the first question I'm going to ask is, what's the pilot cost? And if this is successful, what's the whole program going to cost? So I think it's just nice, needed to have it up front.
So a little more clarification for those lines.
Your discretion.
Okay. Any other comments on this administrative regulation? So a couple of suggestions and then issue them. Do you have anything else that you want to report as a superintendent before the summer vacation?
I would like to report that at last night's RTM meeting, we had unanimous approval, underscore unanimous approval, for both the Riverfield project and the Ludlow High School project. And I know a lot of people around this table and staff put a lot of time and effort over a number of years to see those through, and it was a very gratifying night to see it concluded, and we are excited and ready to support the work that that money authorizes. So that was, that was a good night last night.
The Riverfield Building Committee did a good job of presentations all the way along the line, and so it's to their credit. We just created the building committee last night at, for Ludlow at the RTM. The actual naming of people on it has to be done through the selectmen's office. And so therefore, for that project, Dr. Title and his staff carried most of the water, most of the weight in, in answering questions, getting information on a timely basis. And so for those Board members who were able to come, and perhaps even those Board members who encouraged support for these two individual people, we owe a debt of gratitude for Board participation, staff leadership, volunteer encouragement for parents who showed up and talked. And I'll say that I don't think anybody at this table thought if we put both projects on the RTM agenda on the same night, that we would get unanimous support for both. So that's a, also a good story for the RTM as well. Any questions on that comment, on Dr. Title's?
Just very quickly, having just sat through the Ludlow graduation and heard very powerfully a repeat on just what this year was like at Ludlow, just from my own information, obviously a building committee hasn't even been formed, no one's been brought in or anything, how quickly is this going to impact life at Ludlow?
Well, the building committee has to go through the selectment and has to go to the RTM. So realistically, that's probably work that's going to happen over the summer. Not that I don't think that much would be going on over the summer, so building committee would probably get their feet on the ground in September, and then they need to go through the process of hiring, you know, architect and so forth. So, you know, we'll, we'll do it as rapidly as, as possible, but I think that we're probably looking at, you know, a couple summers out before you're going to see anything, you know, on the ground there.
Are you concerned about the roof?
I will be concerned about the roof until we replace it. And so, you know, we'll certainly impress it upon the, the building committee, the time is of the essence, and if they need to meet more frequently, then there's nothing that says they can't meet more frequently to push it along. Fortunately, both projects are in by the June 30th deadline, filed with the state, which means we'll have access to the state reimbursement at the absolute most opportune time, so, you know, we'll, and we'll move as quickly to give administrative support from my office to, to move it along, but we know that that project is, you know, time is of the essence, as they say.
The other thing about the Ludlow project is that they are very specific ed specs, and so therefore the building committee does not have as many questions as to what they should do because they're very specific. Give us new roof, give us new windows, four classrooms, two science classrooms. Give us new roof, give us new windows, four classrooms, two science classrooms, and declare victory. So, I mean, it's a very clear message, so-
And a couple other things.
A couple of other things, but those are the central, but nonetheless. Any other questions?
What I'm concerned about is the timeline, just as Mrs. Cannelli is. So, what I'm wondering is, if we're hoping to get a building committee and, and feet on the ground in September, but since we know we need to have an architect and all the things that go with an addition, we don't need that, though, for the roof and the window projects, because a lot of work has been already done on those. So, what I'm wondering is, can there be a directive in the charge, if we, if you have a conversation with the first selectmen, about getting those moving quicker? Because there's always, already been a lot of review of those.
There has, but you still have to hire an architect, because the, the work that's been done has not been of the quality where you could then bid the project.
All right, okay.
You know, you see, so you have to have a, plans and specs completed, ready for bidding, those go to the state, the state has to approve them, and then you can go out to bid. So, what we have now in terms of, of work, there's, you're right, a lot of work's been done on the windows-
Right.
...and, and so forth, but you still need to have a professional architect draw up the very detailed plans and specifications, the bid documents-
Right.
...essentially. Now, could those be done more quickly, because they're a little bit simpler, and there's not a lot of, you know, design work in there? Yes.
That's, that's what I'm thinking, right.
Yes, but, but you still have to, they still need an architect, a construction manager, you know, to-
No, but I didn't want one to hold up the process of the other.
Right. I understand.
Any other comments? If not, we'll move on to the old business, and we're at the, previously, these policies were, had a first reading on June 11th, and given to you at that time, so I turn to the Chair of the Policy Committee, Mrs. Cannelli.
Again, this was about bringing the district into compliance with state statute, and that the three that are marked for deletion are because they were supposed to have been subsumed in their entirety, plus the additional information into policy 5112. But at this point, we've already discussed it, looked it over. I didn't know if anybody had any questions.
Questions from the board on any of the policies at the moment? Is that what your question is, on any of the policies? We have one policy, and then several deletions, because the policy we're approving covers the others.
Yep.
There are no questions? Okay, so, we have four recommended motions?
Actually, I think you have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted, procedurally, can we consolidate as a single motion that the Board of Education approved policy 5112, student absence excused, absences, and truancy, and delete from the policy manual, policy number 5115, 5117, and 5118?
The answer is yes. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Mrs. Brand? So, the motion essentially is to approve the 5112 policy with the language that is there, and then to finish the sentence after truancy, to say, and delete policies 5115, 5117, and 5118. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay. Now, this is an action item, so we'll go to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment on the students' attendance excused, absence and truancy policy, and the deletion of the other three? Now, back to the board. We're ready for a vote, so all in favor, raise your hand, say aye. We have a unanimous vote to, to pass that motion, which is to adopt the one policy and delete the other three. Thank you very much. Item number E under seven, continued discussion on planning for the 2014-2015 budget review process. That was in your packet. The sheet is, does not, is not numbered as an exhibit, but it was in your packet, and it looks like this, for those who might not have it right in front of you. At our last meeting, there was item number eight and nine that individual board members asked to have added, and that was, eight, number eight, was having a special work session meeting in May to discuss budget adjustments if needed. I threw that in there, because I didn't want to have a sentence that encouraged the RTM to give us that work to do. And then, number nine, the reconciliation schedule for the prior year's budgets has been placed on the board agenda for discussion in either August or September, and just, that's a confirmation of that. I added number 10, as I think each board member knows, the state has approved a new accounting general ledger system that has to be put in place, and whenever you change a general ledger system, and then you go forward to do a budget, you have problems of having to restate the prior year to match the future year, and with all the line items that we have, that almost always creates difficulties in presentation format. So, this is more to get an update from our finance department as to what they think the impact will be, so that we don't get the budget and say, "Well, I can't match this with something else because..." And so, the year of transition, when we go through this, is, it will be more fun for us than it will be for the finance department. So, that's just to have a kind of an update on it. Any further ideas or suggestions that you want to add to this list for Dr. Title to consider, and then report back to us in August? Or any comments on the list in general? Mr. Carey, and then Mrs. Brand?
So, I believe, Mr. Chair, you captured my thoughts on number two. However, I can be mistaken, but we're close, but I just want to kind of reiterate the point that I was making beginning of a budget season, which was my belief that the process makes it very challenging for us as a board, and I think for administration, and it's not, it's not a ding on our team, it's, it's a statewide process that we follow, where boards, and, and in particular here in Fairfield, the board comes out with a budget asking for everything we think we need. And one of the things I think we have to consider in that process is affordability, and quite frankly, for us to be effective in managing this moving forward, when I say managing it, I mean, having some idea of where we're going to go and where we should be from a budgetary line on a basis. I think that we need to try to set a ceiling, for lack of better terminology. And I don't think that that's just with just this board. I think it has to be a town-wide conversation, where we include Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and RTM in the conversation, much like the capital planning process that I think was initiated a few years ago. And that was very successful in understanding where we fit from a bonding perspective, what can be asked for by the board, what can be asked for by the town, and working backwards from that number. I think one of the challenges we have is we ask for what we need, and if that number is perceived as too high, you have an acrimonious process that ends up moving forward, and we end up in a situation where we're cutting programs. Or, in some cases, not cutting programs, but cutting into our technology budget or other things that are creating less emotion, but not changing the dynamic for us very greatly. So, I think that moving forward, what I would like to see considered is some type of discussion, and I don't know if it's possible for us to start it or not, but maybe we could have it around the same time as we have the capital planning discussion, is what the overall budgeting would be for this town. And I know John Sullivan used to have a five-year plan. If we could be part of that and understand what the number is in advance, I think our team would have a much better chance of planning backwards from that number than at the last minute trying to figure out what we're going to do in May every year.
I, if, I understand that number two captures the essence of your thought. Your last thought, I might not add to this, because I don't think I want the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to ask us why the Board of Ed is suggesting town-wide conversations. So, my guess is if we do number one and two, that will generate town-wide conversations. Any other comments from board members on this list? Mr. Convettito?
I just would like to see a waterfall plan, like we have on the capital budgeting, initiatives and mandates that are coming forward. So, you know, when it comes to budget time, it's not like 15 questions on the same thing. If, if there could be some sort of waterfall system, this initiative's got to be done by such and such a date and so forth, and what the budget implications of those would be, very much like our capital improvement plan, I think would be helpful for the board.
Okay. I'll add, I'll add that to the list. And, where, is Doreen here?
Yeah.
Okay, so, don't lose sleep. Everybody's good, we, we know that everybody's good idea means some staff person's hard work, and, and I don't think any board member here expects that all 11 things are going to be done by August 1st. And so, this is a list of ideas that we're going to work on, and some might happen earlier than others, so don't lose sleep on how much work you have in front of you. I'm sorry, Mr. Convettito.
That can be simply included in the buzz, budget presentation as well.
Yep, yes.
Because I know we had a lot of questions this year about what was mandated by state and so forth, and we have the new mandates coming through, and we can show that waterfall schedule. I think things would go a little easier.
Okay, Mr. Lou.
Thank you. These are just ideas that we're going to sit around and try to figure out if we can do, I mean, they're, they're thoughts, right?
These are ideas that the board would like the superintendent to consider, and then he'll come back in August to say what he thinks is doable within this fiscal year, and what might be doable in another fiscal year, and he may come back saying he doesn't think that this is realistic or needed or whatever. So, I, we're going to give him the opportunity to comment.
One idea I'd like to throw in there, if I may, is, and I know we'll be talking about it later, but is the transfer of balances. So, not to get into that too much, but that if we do have transfer balances at the end of the year, that possibly we are included at the budget time of targeting where, if there are transfers at the end of the year, where those can go, and how they can be focused to possibly putting back things. I know the superintendent has his ideas of what should be put back, but I think the board should also have, be given their ideas of what should be put back.
Okay, I have that concept. Anything else? Mrs. Brand?
I have several things. In fact, I think I mentioned it quite some time ago, talking about a five-year educational plan.
That's, that's number one, where I mean, I'm creating a multi-year budget forecast, is what I thought I was capturing on that.
Okay. Where we have five years, we actually have a strategic plan, which quite frankly, to Mr. Convettito's point, if we took some of those initiatives and then put the year and the cost estimate with them, we would be combining our technology, our capital, as well as our educational initiatives in that, and I think that would be very beneficial not only for that year, but also for the town to have a sense of what direction we're, we're thinking of taking. I think it, it also would give a sense of how we want to pace ourselves in terms of the cost to the town. The other thing that I noticed when I was looking at transfers is that we have categories for transfers, but when I go back and I look at the budget, the way the budget is laid out isn't necessarily the same way the transfers are. So, what I find when I'm looking for the transfer numbers, I'm flipping through the budget book. So, if we structured them the same, in the same categories, that might be very helpful moving forward, so that if I'm looking at something, I have a sense of where it, it falls into place consistent with what we have in policy. And I also think when we're looking at our budget development process, if we want to look at where we are, say, now in our fourth quarter, if, if we look at what I call our fourth quarter shuffle, just to reconcile how we want to finish out the year, that might be very helpful in taking note if we see a trend of what we might want to focus on or fix in the upcoming year.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, I will update, update this with one, two, three comments, three and a half comments, because the transfer comment that you made is, I'll add on to that sentence, and then, and, and I, I should say, Mrs. Munsell, instead of saying Doreen, my apologies. I, I do, will state for the board's clarity that we are not expecting all 12 of these to happen for the next budget calendar year. Frequently, you have long-term, how do we move the ship? And so, we made some changes to the budget process this calendar year, based on an early conversation, having the health report considered in December, changes to the presentation of the book are examples of those, and so, we'll pick off some of these, and then we'll continue discussion on these as we move forward in, in other fiscal years. So, so, board members should not expect that everyone's going to happen, and Doreen should not expect that suddenly she's got a whole summer's worth of work to do. That's it for that. Now, on to new business, food service program and financial summary, and I think, Doreen, you are, I'm sorry, Mrs. Munsell, my apologies. If, if I had my way, I would call everybody by their first names, and that would be the end of it, but that doesn't seem to be the acceptable custom. So, these relate to enclosures number three and four in your packet. Although there are three motions, the motions are covered by items number three and four.
Okay, just first, by way of introduction, you all know Joanne Fitzpatrick, our Director of Food Service. Joanne was on an extended leave this year, and she just returned a few weeks ago on a part-time basis. We were fortunate enough eventually to contract the services of an interim food service director, John White, who sits to my right, just as a way of introduction. As an overview for the program, I want to start at least on a positive note, and recognize how proud we are of all 11 elementary schools who were, who got national recognition for the Healthier U.S. School Challenge by creating healthier environments through promoting good nutrition and physical activity. That was a feather in their cap and well-deserved recognition. The theme of this year seems to be the challenges that we faced, and concerning the significant weather events, it, they were also a challenge for the food service program, they were not spared. Of course, with Sandy, we lost food inventory, just like just about everybody else did in the state. We did account for 75% of recovery from FEMA, but we did have to absorb the other quarter. When we, when Sandy did happen, we were, the food service workers, certain food service workers stepped up and served three, three squares a day for about a week at the Ludlow shelter, so I'd like to recognize them for that, and they received rave reviews, I understand, for what they did. With the weather conditions and the school clothing, closings, it did disrupt the schedule of the consultant that we hired, John Tureen. He was scheduled for staff training and appearances at different schools, and the, we had to shuffle all kinds of things because of the weather, and, and then we ultimately did hold, reschedule and hold many of his, his sessions, but by that time, it was without the involvement of Joanne, so his, the benefit of his work was, was somewhat diminished. Joanne's absence also left us with a void, obviously, in operations for almost three months, and Karen Signis, one of our cook managers, stepped up and assisted us with food orders and menus, until we were able to contract with, for John in mid-March. And then, lastly, you may all know that we lost Joanne Moreno, our cook manager, at Roger Ludlow Middle School last month, very suddenly, and that was very disturbing, devastating for the, for everyone. Regarding the 12-13 goals, the first one was to implement the USDA meal pattern that was new this year. Going to let Joanne speak a little bit to that.
To, to implement the USDA meal pattern, we created a six-week cycle menu that met the pattern. It was analyzed for nutritional value, and the new meal pattern, it includes five components, meat, meat alternate, whole- meat, meat alternate, whole grains, vegetables, with special focus on dark green, red-orange vegetables, legumes, and starchy vegetables. They're required weekly and certain ones daily. The portion size of grain equivalents and calories were set with both minimal and maximum values for daily and weekly offerings at all grade levels. By meeting the USDA regulations, the school district receives six cents reimbursement for each reimbursable meal that we serve. Go ahead. We monitor the changes in the products that have become available to us. In the beginning, it was hard for manufacturers to keep up with the regulations and the manufacturing of products that meet the pattern. They're starting to come on board now, so I think we'll see a lot more products come through this year. And ways that we find out about these products is by attending food shows, vendors bringing in samples for us to try. Also, we have focused on fruits and vegetables, and each week we do purchase locally grown produce when the seasons allow. It's been a real year of transition, and vendors were a little bit slow to bring us some new products, but we should have more choices coming this year.
The third goal was to engage the services of the consultant, as I mentioned, and we did hire John Tureen from Sustainable Foods. John did introduce several new recipes to the program. You may have heard some of them, you may have heard about kale chips, or garlicky green beans, or garlicky smashed potatoes, and probably for sure spicy fat fries. And those were things that he worked with the cooks with, and then offered us samples and promoted with the program. He also held a mini boot camp for all the cook managers at Ward, and he did cooking demonstrations and some techniques, and the cook managers also had some hands-on participation. I also participated in that session myself, which was very interesting. John's worked with the staff at most schools. He piloted, worked, focused mostly in the beginning at McKinley and Roger Lello Middle School. He interacted with students at lunch, offered the samples, and really got them excited about school lunch. Eventually, when we contracted with John, he stepped right in and assumed the responsibilities of the food orders and the menu development. Commodities was a huge issue that had to be addressed, and staffing. Since he's been here, he's also initiated online purchasing, inventory controls, some menu variations, and staffing recommendations, so we're very fortunate to have him.
We featured whole grains, fruits and vegetables throughout our monthly sample days. Student samples foods that they may not have had before or had the chance to try. We did put a list in your packet of what we've sampled this year. We usually sample at the beginning of the month, and toward the end of the month, we incorporate the sample item into the menus. We have posters that we put up that give little bits of information and fun facts about the products that we sample, and that generates a lot of excitement with the children.
Our final goal was to research and implement different forms of communication to improve the way the food service program distributes information, and also how it gets feedback back from the parents and the students. And we did the typical newsletters, and posted information on the website, did bulletin boards on the back of the elementary menus, signage and posters, especially alerting the students to the new meal pattern. And also, John Tureen participated in this with trying to get the McKinley and Roger Lello Student Council going, getting some feedback from them. He did meet with us, with the representatives from the FLIP committee, FLIP group, and Joanne's absence, subsequent meetings kind of became impractical, and that kind of fell by the wayside. So we did reserve a limited number of John's contractual hours for next year to try to regroup and finish up on these initiatives. But this was a goal that we did fall short on and recognize, and rolled over into the goals for 13-14. So on the 13-14 goals, continue to introduce the fruits and vegetables by sample day, promote them, and market them, but also try to get some feedback on, from the students, and offer them on future menus. The relaxation, the regulations on grains and meat and meat alternatives were relaxed in March of 13, I think everyone recognized, the federal level, that this was, it was hard to maintain, so they did revise them. And initially, they said that they would only be for this year, but now they've decided to continue them into 13-14. And we're hoping that that relaxation of the regulation may allow us to reinstate some specialty bars at the middle school and high school, which were successful when they were introduced in 10-11, and were not so hot this year.
I'd like to continue on, but before I do, I'd like to first say thank you to Doreen and everybody in the central office, Barbara, Karen, and the rest of the central office staff, for all of their help and support and guidance during my stay here. And additionally, to all of the school staffs, when I went out to the schools, they were very helpful, pointing me in the right direction. When I came in the main door, they guided me to where the cafeterias were and everything else like that, and that was a big help. So to carry on, goal number two is to follow up on the goal that we fell short on, further improved communication. What we're going to try to do is work on feedback, back from the students and the parents. My vision is to look for student ambassadors in the schools, would work with the, or have Joanne work with the principals at each school, so identify student ambassadors that would go out to the student population, and to try to find out, you know, what they think about, and give us some feedback about our program and what we can do to improve it, what they like about our program, what they would like to see, and what they don't like, so we could make those changes. I would meet with, try to meet with those students, or suggest that Joanne meet with those students, at least on a quarterly basis. Additionally, I think this is important at the beginning of the school year, to attend open houses, especially in the elementary schools, where our participation has been declining over the last five years. We're part of the school environment, and I think we should be there for open houses. I would suggest that the cook manager be there. We'd have some sample plates out and be able to describe to the parents just exactly what the food service-
Excuse me, when I came around the back, you can't hear you in the back room at all, so you might want to have the microphone closer. Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No problem. To be at the open houses, so the parents could learn about the program in the beginning of the year, and hopefully that will help us to improve our participation in the elementary schools, starting at the beginning of the year. And then, when I first came here, our ordering was very labor-intensive. Basically, orders had to be written out, faxed in, and so I worked with one of our main vendors, Thurston, and I got our velocity reports off of them, and we set up online ordering schedules based upon our past ordering practices with them by school. So, starting the next school year, our cook managers will be able to log on to the Thurston website, go to their school page specifically, place their order, have it sent to Joanne for her final approval before it's sent in, to get done. I also recommend it to Doreen that we do monthly inventories. In the past, we used to do them at least on a bimonthly basis, and I feel it's better to do it on a monthly basis, you have a better idea of how much food you have in a house, better control of your inventory, and you'll be able to manage it much better that way.
And let me just say that I had John speak to these particular goals, because he has, they were his ideas, and he has used them in other districts and found them to be successful. The final goal is to establish financial stability by increasing meal participation rates, containing cost without compromising nutritional value. Meals, meal counts were included in the packets. You have to focus on meals served per day, because there's too much of a variation in the number of days served between, in a month, between one year to the next. So you'll see that meals per day have declined through May, all our data is May through year to date. However, there were a few charts in there also, if you look, you can see that the meals per day from March through May have, are trending up. Just to summarize, the finances, 10-11, we had about a $70,000 loss. 11-12, we had $265,000 loss, and this year, for 12-13, so far, we're projecting a $380,000 loss. The elementary traditional lunches, the revenue went down by $146,000. There was a decline, a pretty big decline. On the other hand, middle and high school hot lunches went up slightly to about $13,000. The deluxe meals, however, at the high school and the middle school, took a drastic drop of $227,000. So that's the overall picture of the food service program.
Questions from the board on the presentation, and then we'll go into the motions. Mrs. Iacona.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work that you put into the food service program. Do you track meals that don't sell? So for example, do you know that if you're serving quiche pie on Wednesday, and you've consistently sold it on three Wednesdays in a particular timeframe, it's a poor seller? Do you know that?
We did, although we've tracked it before, I started tracking it in a different way this year. We actually tracked the dates that they were offered, you know, we took a menu item and put the dates that it was offered in the meal counts, and totaled them up year-to-date, and then sorted them by popularity. And I didn't bring them with us here, but that is something that I don't know that we looked at necessarily in depth, and I think this year there was a fear of changing that six-week cycle because of the strict regulations. So although things might have been, you know, plucked out of one week and put somewhere else and substituted, we didn't really do a wholesale look at the menu.
Right. For example, like if you're running a restaurant, and you have a dish that just does not sell, you traditionally would drop it off your menu. Are we going to be studying, or are you thinking about studying? You know, kale chips just aren't working, then let's just not sell kale chips. Okay, so we're looking at all that. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Mr. Lou.
Now, when we were talking about the budget, I guess this is a question for Dr. Tittle too, wasn't it last year that we had food service pay for their own pensions? And I think we had talked about, well then, is it fair for them to be charged custodial fees?
Yeah. Pensions they've always paid. Perhaps what you're remembering about the pension was, in the budget that I presented to the board this year, the increased cost of the pension, I had proposed to pass that on to the program. And the board said, no, we'd rather increase the lunch prices than do that. So we withdrew that from the budget. The electricity and the custodial services are in the budget as a $110,000 payment from the food service program to the board. And that was a recommendation in the audit, the Prismatic Audit. And I think so the earliest we would have done that would have been the 11-12 budget, is that when it first started? So 11-12 budget, the 12-13 budget, it's in the 13-14 budget. But that had not been something traditionally that the food service program had done. Think when the Prismatic Group came in, they saw that, you know, here's a program with a fund balance of, at the time, $900,000, and saying that it's legitimate to do it, and we did it. Now I think we have to rethink that, but that's sort of the history of it. You got it right.
Okay, thank you. And so those custodial fees are portioned to be what they supposedly are using, or is it just?
Yes. Yeah, we estimated it on a square footage basis, and electrical on a square footage basis, I believe is how we did it, Tom, right?
Great.
Any other questions on the program report before we get into the motions? Mrs. Brand.
I apologize for stepping out for a moment. I look at this, and I look at it from just financial, and it's devastating. I mean, I don't even know where to begin. You're looking at trying to get increase in participation, because I look at this and I see participation rates going down. In fact, the free and reduced lunch subsidies are actually helping us quite a bit, from what I looked at here. Our healthy food subsidy is helping us. I'm just, obviously, I'm expressing a concern, I quite frankly think you're doing everything you can possibly do to encourage participation, there's no question about that. Do you know are other districts seeing the same trend that we are here? So we're not an anomaly. So do we think it's the economy? Do we have a sense of what's causing this?
There's a lot of things that are causing it. There's a lot of things, the economy, the new food regulations that came into play this past year, put a lot of limits, especially on a portion sizes of grains and meat alternatives. However, the USDA realized that, and they kind of relaxed those regulations around February or March or whatever, we're allowed to offer a little bit bigger portion sizes.
So that's why you think it picked up in March going on forward the rest of the year?
I believe that's part of it, yes.
Any other? I'm sorry, no.
No, but I do appreciate that you've tried, I know you really have, so thank you.
Mr. Fattabene.
Thank you again for that report, it was very enlightening, I guess. My question is, in your report, you indicate that two of the factors that students, indicating what the factors are, why you think the meal numbers have gone down. And it says, two of the factors that students rejected were having to take fruit and vegetables and the smaller portions. Do you know if they're rejecting fruits and vegetables? My belief is probably fruits and vegetables have a lower shelf life than some other foods. Do you know what your spoilage rate is, or what your percent of waste is, and whether that has gone up or not, or whether that has stayed fairly constant, or how you manage
I think that the fruits we order on a weekly basis, so we would adjust our ordering pattern, so we wouldn't order as much on that, but the new regulations this year required students to take a fruit or a vegetable in order for it to be a reimbursable meal. Of the five components offered, they must have a fruit or vegetable on their plate. And not only here in Fairfield, but, you know, throughout the state and throughout the United States, a lot of students kind of rejected that, being forced to have to take something. And in a lot of places, they would take it, you know, just because they had to, go out into the dining area and just toss it, whatever, you know, so it's, could lead a horse to water, but you can't make them drink it, you know? In the past, there were different regulations for what constituted a reimbursable meal.
Did you have another question, Mr. Fattabene? If not, Mrs. Brand?
I had something on that point, yeah.
Well, you have to, on that point?
You have something on that.
That's the problem, and it's- That's the problem, and it's not your fault. I'm not blaming anybody at the end of the table. You're being told that's what you have to do. That is the overwhelming complaint that I get from parents and students of why they've stopped buying lunch. They're sick and tired of being told that they have to take this, and then they throw it in the garbage. It's easier to bring it from home. So I applaud all of your efforts to try and attract kids to the table, to get them to buy lunch, to make it more creative. The healthy food is fantastic. I applaud all of you on that. But with all of these regulations that are hanging over your heads, I'm not really sure what you're going to really do to change anybody's mind. Down to the fact where I ate lunch the other day with a group of seven-year-olds who get it and think that the whole thing is ridiculous and hardly ever buy lunch anymore. So it's, it's an issue that I don't know that you're going to be able to manage, and I don't know that these lunch prices can sustain this type of program anymore. And the federal government's not doing a darn thing to kick in more to keep these prices lower. And the only way to make this profitable is to really take these numbers where then nobody's going to even be able to afford to buy the lunch. So I'll just leave you with that. I won't be supporting any of this tonight, not because of anything you've done, but it's a protest vote against the federal government and the state government coming in here, telling us what to do, and then not giving us any money to do it.
Mrs. Brand?
In view of the financial report that we have, that we hadn't, we traditionally do not get and get in an annual basis, I would recommend that this come to us on a quarterly basis, so we have a better sense of how we're faring throughout the year. These folks actually don't even have to be here. They already do their numbers. They know exactly where they are. But because we're, I think, in a very precarious situation, I think it would be very prudent to do that.
Any other comments or questions before we take the motions? I'm trusting that Mrs. Iacrona has expressed the same viewpoints that Mr. Carey has often made and would just say ditto, correct? Any other final questions and comments so that we can move on to the agenda item motions? Mr. Convatito?
I'll wait till the motion.
No further discussion on the program report. The first two motions are the same that we have passed in the past, as well as the third motion, only this year it does include the anticipated increase that we talked about at budget time, and anticipated increase that we talked at budget time. So the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve participation in the Healthy Food Certification Program for the school year 2013-14, with the exclusion of the sale of food, number one, sold in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend, and number two, such sale is at the location of the event, and three, such food is not sold from a vending machine or school store. Do I have a motion? I have Mrs. Cannelli. Do I have a second? Mrs. Brand? Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Convatito, is that the motion that you want to talk to? No? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? We can go to the public on this motion regarding the participation in the Healthy Food Certification Program. Any comments from the public on this motion? Back to the board. Ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convatito, Mr. Lou, Mrs. Gerber, Phil Dwyer, Mr. Fattabene, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Brand, all opposed. Mrs. Iacrona, the motion passes eight to one. The second motion for consideration tonight is approval of the sale of beverages. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education allow the sale of beverages not listed in Section 10221Q of the Connecticut General Statutes. Number one, sold in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend, and two, such sale is at the location of the event, and three, such food or beverage is not sold from a vending machine or school store. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Brand? Mrs. Cannelli seconds it. Any discussion on this motion? Mr. Convatito, it's the last motion that you wish to talk to. Okay. Any discussion from the public or presentation from the public on the sale of beverages not listed in Section 10221Q? Hearing none. The board is ready for a vote. All in favor of this motion, raise your hand. Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convatito, Mr. Lou, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Fattabene, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Brand, all opposed. Mrs. Iacrona. So the motion passes eight to one. Thank you. And the final motion regarding school lunches is the recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the recommended school lunch prices for the 2013-2014 school year as contained in enclosure number five. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Brand moves, and Mrs. Cannelli seconds. Thank you both. Shall I skip over Mr. Convatito, or is now you want to say, I'm ready?
I'm ready now. On the exhibit that shows the actual 11-12 to 12-13, and the price increase, which shows a net of $97,451, correct me if I'm wrong, but the price of deluxe meals in 12-13 was $385? This current year?
Correct.
Okay. You're taking point two, you're taking a quarter on all meals, and the proposed price increase on deluxe meals, as I see it, is still $385. So it looks to me like that $114,873 times point two-five should not be included in there. It looks like it's off by about $26,000 or so. Am I correct? You're taking the total amount of lunches, $391,589?
That was for this year.
But this year's price is $385.
Correct.
And next year's price is proposed to be $385. So that $114,000 times a quarter needs to be subtracted from that, $97,000. Is that correct?
Could you be clear as to what sheet you're comparing?
I'm looking at this sheet before the graph.
For Mrs. Munsell's benefit as well.
All right. It's not numbered. Wait. In the middle, you have price increases. Lunch all meals, $387,126, times the price increase of point two-five. That would be correct if we were, if the proposed increase for the deluxe meals was $4.10, correct? But we're not proposing to increase the deluxe meals at the...
No, that's an analysis of revenue this year with the price increase that we instituted for 12-13.
Versus 11-12.
For 12-13.
Right.
Right, versus 11-12, correct.
Make sure you use the microphone for the benefit of the...
So by my calculation, the price increase for 12-13, okay, would generate $56,65, $67,000.
No, that, it's what's on the...
On what?
On the sheet. You're talking about 13-14, I think.
I'm talking about, the price increase for 13-14 would generate about $67,000. Is that correct?
There, we're not recommending a price increase.
Closure number five. Closure number five is not recommending a price increase?
Not in the deluxe meals.
On deluxe. On the others it is, but not on the deluxe.
I understand that. So the net difference, okay, assuming we serve the same amount and the same type of lunches for 13-14, would be an increase in revenue of about $67,000. Is that correct?
I think that's about right. This is the 11-12 sheet. Is that what it was?
Right. And we know we have a projected shortfall in that of $50,000. Is that correct on the pension contribution?
Correct.
So we only have a margin of error of $17,000 plus or minus for 13-14?
It's a thin margin, that's correct.
Assuming we're already down $380,000.
Right. I mean, basically, what it comes down to is...
This doesn't do anything to build the reserve.
Right. The only way to get out of this box is increase participation. You can't price your way out of it. You couldn't charge enough, right?
Agreed.
So, yes, there's an increase, knowing to the fact that the board said, we want to cover the 50 in the increase. That's kind of what we did.
Okay.
And that was really the intent of it. The intent of the price increase is not to try to dig ourselves out of the financial hole. The only way you're going to get out of this financial hole is by increasing participation.
Okay.
Period.
I just want to make sure I'm running through the numbers correctly.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Answer your question. Any other questions on the motion regarding school lunch prices? Okay. Go to the public. Any comments on the motion regarding establishing school lunch prices for the 2013-2014 year? Hearing none. The board is ready for a vote. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand and say aye. I have, okay, Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convatito, Mr. Lou, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Fattabene, Mr. Carey, and Mrs. Brand, all opposed. Mrs. Iacrona, the motion passes eight to one. Thank you very much. Now, Mrs. Fitzpatrick, the entire board wishes you continued good recuperation and good health. Okay, we're at the agenda for public comments and petitions. Whoop, whoop, did I miss? Oh, financial report. I thought I was, I thought I was going to, I thought I was on schedule. Hopefully, I can still be on schedule. Mrs. Munsell?
The transfer that we're looking for is $1,399. It's less than 1% of the budget. These are still just estimates. I want to make sure that I make that clear, even though there's only a few days left. School's still in session, and we still have the weekend, and anything can happen. And I, just this year, I wouldn't put anything past us. And the board will, like we did last year, receive an updated report in the fall when we have finally closed. But there's no, you know, no surprises. Everything's in line with what I've been reporting quarterly. Savings in salaries due to turnovers and vacancies, leave of absence in FMLA are offset by, obviously, substitute costs. We have to cover those positions. Interns is also part of the substitutes. Schools had a choice between an intern and a building sub, so that's an offset there. I have included here a supplemental payment to the medical retention fund if we can, if everything proves to the way it's shown here, that's something we can do. Special ed, over budget, excess costs, and additional costs are the culprits there. School expenses or residual balances from the school accounts. We have included here upgrade, security upgrades. We have, we went out to bid, and we were able to award that bid to the full extent that we wanted to. Legal fees are over budget. There's a number of reasons for that. Maintenance, the two maintenance emergency projects were Hurricane Sandy, and there's a little bit of money on there, in there for the Osborne Hill roof drain, but that's just exploratory, you know, to research what the issue is. There's nothing there to remedy it. Other maintenance accounts were, snow removal was one of them. Supplies, we, if you remember, we hired an additional plumber this year, and plumbing supplies were substantially over budget, and fire protection, electric. The maintenance projects, that's the $85,000 from the woods lockers that we reserved for the security, and a few residual balances. Some variations here in utilities. Heat, we had some savings in usage. Same with water and gas. Some of that's heat. And electric, the same thing. Uses were down a little bit. The capital outlet, part of that is the wireless project at the elementary schools. We said that it might go over budget, and it did. So we're doing a balancing act, but we're doing it.
Any questions from members of the board? Okay, Mrs. Brand, Mrs. Cannelli, and then Mr. Convatito.
What I did is look where we were last year versus where we were this year. So I looked back at the June 26 minutes to see if I saw a significant shift, just like we do with our regular budget, because that helps frame it for me. I noticed that Mr. Fattabene had asked about the substitute costs then. They were lower. They were $725,589. But it is an ongoing trend that we are short in substitutes. It's my understanding that there just aren't enough of them, as we have found where some kids had classes canceled. I don't know if there's anything we can do about that, but honestly, I really think we're going to have to allocate more funds moving forward to that, and hope also that we'll have more employees to be able to plug in there. But it is something that has been falling short for the last two years now. There were also some others that I looked at. One of them was transportation. Last year, we had an issue where we were short $64,000, and this year, we're $169,885. So that's, again, a significant shift. So I'm concerned about what might that, what the cause was for that. Many of the others were in range. Legal fees this time doubled. I'm not sure as to why. I know Ms. Munsell already said there were a number of reasons for that, and I know we had certainly other expenses that came up. Pupil personnel services were zero last year, and we're in the hole, $278,939. Again, I'm looking for comparison's sake as to moving forward, how we can plan so that we're hopefully hitting our targets a little bit better. You know, I understand that things happen. I can understand the substitutes. You have attrition, you have turnover. But again, we seem to be missing some of these, this time, much more so than last year. Last year, we had a total transfer of $255,000. It was nothing. This year, again, relative to the size of the budget, it's not huge, but we're missing the mark on a few of them. So I don't know if we, moving forward, we want to take a look at that in the budget development for next year, so that, you know, we're not doing the fourth-quarter shuffle. Thanks.
Mrs. Cannelli?
Actually, Mrs. Brand said a few of the things that I'd wanted to say. Again, one of the lines that did stand out to me, I never expect to see that with transportation. I was curious what, was that something, overwhelmingly, I'm curious about what was anticipated versus not? And that was certainly one that stood out as being a surprise to me.
Let me just say that transportation is the bane of my existence. Probably more so than special ed. $112,000 of that savings is special ed. And the explanation I received was that there's, there was less overage. A special ed operates, the buses operate on a certain timeframe, and if they go over, there's an overage charge, and there were savings there. That was the explanation I was given.
So the $169,000 is a savings over what our budget was?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Convatito?
That's for next year. Okay. But this, transportation's a $7 million account. You have to know that some of these numbers are, as a percentage, not that far off. In fact, it's quite something when the transportation budget comes in pretty close. There are so many variables to it. Special ed, outplacements of children, you know, someone might move into the district, and they're outplaced. And not only do we pay the tuition, of course, but we also pay the transportation. It's hard to anticipate that. Runs, overage, you know, you can have a lot of things happen. There's a lot of moving parts in the transportation budget, so...
I should also mention that about $20,000 of that savings is in penalties.
We've been much more vigilant about collecting from the vendor.
Mr. Convatito? Mr. Convetito?
Yeah, on the first three lines of the report, certified salaries, additional retirees, and substitutes, my underst... And again, if my understanding is incorrect about these numbers, is that in certified salaries, leave of absences, family leave, we saved seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand because people were on leave of absence or family leave. Therefore, we had to pay substitutes to cover them, right?
Correct.
Okay. And the additional retirees, okay, again, the same thing. They may have retired mid-year, and we had to hire long-term subs to fill those positions, right? So, that's basically an in and out, okay?
Correct.
It's not something that's been shuffled here or there.
That's what happens.
It's just the way it rolls on a rollout on a one-hundred-and-eighty-year cycle, a one-hundred-and-eighty-day cycle.
Right. That's an, you know, our personnel services line is, what, eighty million dollars? Hundred million dollars? I mean, again, you have to look at these as a percentage of the whole, but you also do know that, to Mrs. Brand's point, we did increase this year the estimated number of retirees in the budget.
Right.
So, we have... We do look at the trends on this, and where we think we can make an adjustment for the following year's budget, we make it. We also took some turnover in next year's budget when we did the budget cut, because we could forecast some. So, if we can forecast it, we take it. But this is right. This is really ins and outs of, you know, somebody gets to March, they're having a baby, they go out on a leave unpaid for a lot of that rest of the year. You pay the substitute, and you save it on the certified salary line, and so the money... That's how we just... That's how we budget it.
Right. It's... Okay. I just wanted to make that clear and get it on the record.
Dorian, I explained that correctly?
There is... Okay.
Okay.
And the same thing would go with the other ones. We didn't get as many degree changes as we anticipated.
Correct.
Okay. The non-certified salaries, explain that one.
The same thing. Turnover, leave of absence.
So, somebody may leave, we may hire somebody for a lesser amount of money on it.
Or, again, that could be in the substitute line.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, right. Substitutes could cover... We're talking about certified and non-certified.
Right. So, I mean, my understanding that a substitute is less than on a daily basis?
Correct. Exactly.
All right. I just get emails on these, and I just want to make sure that it's
Right.
in the record that the differential is because we pay substitutes less than we pay a teacher to be there for the day.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Last question from Mrs. Brand.
Yeah, it's actually a follow-up at John's point, that actually, the other pieces with additional retirees, certified salaries, substitutes, there was a change with substitutes, but the other two were pretty consistent with what we had prior year. The only other question I had was, oh, my God, I just drained, brain drained. Oh, God, it left my brain.
Well, let me put the motion on the table, and then perhaps you'll think of it as we see if there are any questions on the motion. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the line item transfers for the 2012-13 fiscal year as detailed in the financial statement, enclosure number six. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Brand, Mr. Carey seconds it. Is it unfrozen?
Yes, it's unfrozen.
Okay. Mrs. Brand?
Through the chair to Dr. Tidal. Do we know roughly how many retirees, and is it what we targeted?
You're not going to believe this. We budgeted sixteen, and as of this moment, we have fifteen.
Okay. That's good.
So, we're right on, right where we figured we would be.
Okay.
So, we're banking on one in the next six days.
Yeah.
No, I mean, we're at the ballpark, right? So, we estimate it correctly.
You were a former economist, right?
I was.
So, are you going to be forecasting interest rates in the future?
They're going up.
Any other final comments before we address the motion? Mr. Carey?
Just a brief comment, Mr. Chair. Just thank you to Ms. Moncello, our team, and Dr. Tidal for ninety-nine point one percent accuracy in a one-hundred-and-forty-eight-million-dollar budget, which is fairly impressive, that we're moving this small an amount, particularly as Mr. Convetito points out, that seven figures of this amount is basically a swap for teachers and substitutes. So, thank you very much for all your efforts to getting us to this level of budgetary excellence.
And eight members of this board would agree with Mr. Carey's thank you to all of your staff services. If there are no other questions before we go to the motion, any members of the public wish to address the motion on approval of the budget transfers for the 2012-13 fiscal year? Please state your name and address.
Thank you. Suzanne Misco, one-twenty-three Rygate Road. Oh, where do we begin? Security upgrades, I thought, were coming from the Fairfield Woods Middle School lockers. Yet, we're moving money within the budget in order to pay for them. A million dollars in substitutes. I can tell you, maybe it makes everyone on this board comfortable. As a parent, it doesn't make me very comfortable to know that instead of when someone retires or leaves, we somehow hold off and put in a lot of substitutes. A million dollars in substitutes plus whatever was originally allocated is a little concerning as a parent. To see a million dollars in salaries when we stood here not even four or five weeks ago arguing over a half a million dollars in programs, this fiscal budget that we're looking at, that you're all going to move transfers on, we couldn't get world language for seventy-five thousand. So, this is a little disconcerting, and this is not the first nor the last time that we've seen the, in the Personnel Services, seen a credit that's used to compensate other lines of the budget. My other problem with this, which I did email you all, and I will reiterate it, is that these are line items from different categories within the budget. I appreciate that it's easier to put all of the salaries together, but I would think that you should acknowledge that exactly what lines these are coming out of, as far as what's being moved to compensate for the other side. This is not... While I appreciate some thinking this is something exciting, it doesn't, because it tells me that either we're not hiring at the same level for the same salaries, and we're looking at long-term substitutes more frequently than maybe we should be. I'm concerned with this. This is the second year we've seen it, and this always comes after a budget where we all had to sit here and beg for seventy-five thousand.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on this agenda item? Hearing none. Any other comments from the board on this agenda item? If not, are we ready to vote? All in favor of the motion that is in front of you, raise your hand and say aye. Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Iacono, Mr. Fattabean, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Brand, all opposed. Mr. Lou, the motion passes eight to one. Now, the second item that I skipped over in my haste to try and move the agenda, my apologies, Mrs. Gerber, the first reading of the Communications Committee report.
Okay. You've got two separate things here. The first is the Board of Ed Ad Hoc Communications Committee Final Draft Presentation. This whole packet here is pretty much the same as you received at our last meeting, except some of the attachments are labeled differently. I just wanted to make sure that you all had it here to look at in connection with Attachment H, which was the second piece, and this is new. So, our committee met one last time, I think, and Mr. Dwyer and myself kind of put together this list here to kind of show what we've done, what we are hopefully going to be able to do in the near future, and then what we will look at as a board in the little more distant but foreseeable future. So, just to go through here, the first two are things that we've done, the changes to the website, changes to the minutes, that type of thing. So, that's already done. Number three, we have keeping contact with the PTAs. So, what we discussed this in the last meeting, what I did here was just, you know, kind of have it more specific as to how we're going to do this, to reach out to the PTA presidents over the summer, and then get a schedule out to the board members so that they can figure out where they can fit it into their schedules to go to either two PTA meetings throughout the school year, or one PTA meeting and a school event. So, that's number three. Number four, we thought we'd do quarterly memos to PTAs and other town bodies, just to kind of sum up the last couple of months. So, we thought we'd do April, July, October, and December. I did provide that attachment in the first packet here, just to give you a sense of what we were looking at in terms of just kind of giving quick summations of the meetings and with links to the full minutes and fair TV, so that when people want more information, they'll be able to find it quickly and easily. Then, number five, town hall meeting. We looked at a couple of dates here. We thought November sixteenth or twenty-third, and going along with, trying to do it along the lines of the Board of Finance, we thought a Saturday morning might make sense, and lasts no longer than two hours, sign-up list for speakers if there are a huge number of them, and that Board of Ed members would have a chance to speak briefly. Number six, then, well, we're kind of doing this right now. We did it tonight for the, well, second time, I guess, we did the Odyssey of the Mind in the last meeting, but to have a specific time at the start of each meeting to have a recognition of students. And we just added the protocol here as to how it will work, so that it's not just kind of loosey-goosey that we actually have, you know, contacting the school principals or headmasters on a monthly basis with a reminder, just to say, "If anything happens, can you please send it to us?" And then, we'll have no more than three groups, and if there are more than three groups in a given month, it'll be kind of a first-come, first-serv type thing, and to perhaps carry any additional groups over to the next meeting. And then, we'll just have the write-ups, as we did for this meeting, just to talk about what the students have done. Then, number seven is annual recognition of Board of Ed reps from the school PTAs. This would be at the September or October meeting. We'd also have recognition of new teachers. That would also be September, October. We could just make sure that there weren't conflicts with, you know, there's so many back-to-school nights in September, so we would just have to work around that. And then, C retiring teachers, that would take place at one of our June meetings. Obviously, that would make the most sense there. Board of Ed member bios to post on website. If board members could submit bios to Meg Brown by our August twenty-seventh meeting, we can get them up on the website. And the packet here, we have a couple of examples. PR intern, this is something that the chair would be looking at and working with the central office leadership team. The thought would be to have one student from Fairfield U for one semester, one from Sacred Heart for one semester, and that the chair would work with the superintendent to determine appropriate staff person to supervise the intern, and then the intern would also work with the board secretary. Here, we have these different terms that we went over. The thought with this would be to add this to the Board of Ed handbook the next time the Board of Ed handbook is revised. Eleven is the procedures for public suggestions and complaints. This would be something that we would discuss at our bylaws discussion in the fall. Same for number twelve with public comment, just to look at if we were going to be making any changes to that. That would also take place during the bylaws discussion. And the final one here, the surveys or survey, we thought that this would be something that the board could consider for the goal-setting process for the next school year, and we usually have that in the fall as well. So, those are those items, and that's pretty much it. So, any comments, questions from the board?
This is on as a first reading, and what we anticipate, I believe this is a correct statement, but correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Gerber, that we would simply vote to accept the report, because these are ideas that we will work on, and some may come to fruition quickly, and others may need more time to talk about and implement. So, it's more an acceptance that all of these will be worked on, worked on as possible. And I think that's kind of where we saw it?
Yeah. No, that was the, that was the thought. So, but if anyone has any comments...
Comments and conversation tonight that the committee might want to consider to make adjustments to this before you see it in August. Mrs. Brand?
The only other piece that I would suggest is that although all the board members are reading it, to make sure it is consistent with our current policies as well, so we don't have anything that's in conflict.
Any other comments? Mr. Fattabean?
I just want to comment as far as, some of this is going to eat into board time, I would think. One of these, while, you know, I agree recognizing students, since I'm number six, whether we really need to do every, every meeting, or maybe like every monthly meeting, or every month, just because if you do it too regular and consistently, it loses some of its importance. You know, I just don't want to, you know, feel like we're doing it because we have to do it every meeting.
Well, I think the thought with that would be, you know, we could say monthly, but then sometimes there will be times when there will be maybe more than three groups, in which case then we would want to do it maybe at the second meeting. I don't know if we'd want to do it at the first meeting normally, but then if there were a number of groups that came and we couldn't recognize them all at the first meeting of the month, then maybe we would have them in the second meeting of the month. I mean, this was just an idea. I mean, I'm...
Yeah, I think the committee was cognizant of, "It's a good idea. Let's experiment with it for a while and see how much time it does take, and make sure that it doesn't keep us from getting to our other items." But some could also argue that the only purpose we have here is to celebrate students. But that's a philosophical statement.
Well, I think, too, there's also the idea that there may be some months where we might not get, you know, I think depending on the time of year, I think there are some times when there are certain things, certain times of year where there are more opportunities for recognition. So, there may be a point where we don't get any feedback from any of the principals. I mean, and we did set the parameters that would be state, regional, or national, you know, with the thought that we didn't want to have, you know, this kind of wave of students, you know, coming to us. So, but again, I mean, this is nothing that's written in stone. We just, we're not quite sure what responses we're going to get moving forward, I guess.
Well, that goes to what's the purpose of adopting a recommended report, if it's not, in essence, what we're doing. I mean, these are all advisory. Then, are going to be decided whether we implement them in the future. Then, I guess that my confusion is that if we adopt this, as your description, this is the direction we're going in. This is what we're going to do.
And I think that's why I use the word that we would accept the report, so that it becomes something that we can flexibly work on, depending on concerns like you raised, not a, "It has to happen by a certain date," you know? So, that's why I'm suggesting that the motion is going to say, "Accept the report, not adopt the report."
Okay.
Maybe I'm parsing words, but please don't argue with me as a lawyer.
No, I just want to understand, not, it's not, just an understanding as the direction we're going in. If you don't understand the direction we're going in, it's hard to go in that direction. I just want to be clear.
Yes.
That what is intended and what is meant when we, if we're going to vote on it, I want to know, you know, that, what that vote is.
And I think the word "accept" is that we're voting to accept this report, that they're reasonably good ideas, and we will try to work on them, but if not all of them come to fruition, it's probably for good and just reasons. Any other final comments on the communications report? Mr. Lou, do you have anything that you want to say as a member of the committee? Mrs. Brand, any final comment?
Just one of the things, for instance, when we're talking about what's on the agenda, we have our agendas written out in our bylaws, so that we require a bylaw change, which is why I was mentioning policy things.
Yep.
So, there might be things here that we need to vet, which is why I thought perhaps policy also should have the chance to look through that to vet it.
One of the, we put items eleven, twelve, and thirteen, eleven, twelve to do in November because of the bylaw discussion. You're correct that number six would have to be added to that list. Thank you. Any other final comments on this? Any final comments, Mrs. Gerber, you want to make?
No, just if anyone has further suggestions. So, I guess we're going to vote to accept this in August. Is that the intent? So, if anyone has any questions, concerns, additions, subtractions, things that they want to address, if you could sometime over the summer, let me know so that we could, you know, get that on here. That would really be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're on to public comments and petitions. Any member of the public wish to address the board on subjects that were not covered tonight?
Good evening.
Please state your name and address.
Absolutely. Kelly Crisp, one-ninety-four Paper Mill Road. I just had a couple of thoughts about the administrative regulations, and I appreciate that effort has been spent in creating the regulations so that teachers have a go-by sooner than later. And my suggestions are essentially two. I'm concerned about the exclusions, particularly the software, the online services, and the new instructional techniques. My old school system, the elementary school had over a thousand students. We had a computer for every student in every classroom as a result of a dot-com dad. And so, we used an enormous amount of technology at my old school. And so, these, while they seem fairly innocuous, could be enormous expenses and have significant impacts to learning. So, I think it's short-sighted not to include these as part of the piloting review process. I also was concerned about the makeup of the Curriculum Coordinating Council. It's not included in the regulation, and I think that it would be helpful... It's not included in the regulation, and I think that it would be helpful that the makeup at least is included because it appears as though this, the CCC, is, plays the role of a kind of gatekeeper or provides final approval, and yet, we don't know who's part of this CCC. And I would ask specifically that the superintendent be included in either the initial list of individuals that must approve or as part of the CCC, because I don't see that the superintendent is part of this piloting approval process, and I think the buck stops with the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Trisha Donovan, 164 Tainer Drive. I, too, would like to comment on the administrative regs on piloting. In the first section on where it describes definition of a planned pilot program, I would just like to understand better what research-based recommendation means. I don't know if that means something as simple as a site visit or someone read about it or if you're looking to have a proven track record over a long period of time and if it's backed up by several different researchers. I think that needs to be more clearly defined. And in looking at this regs, and I don't know if this is possible to add in this, but we have definitions of a planned pilot, we have an approval process, and we have prior to implementation, but we don't really have protocols for ongoing during the planned pilot and when it's ongoing. I would like to see more information of who will be involved in monitoring a pilot program, its success or its failure, who's responsible for data collection. And I think we need to see very clear planned stages of data collection and the reporting so that adjustments may be made along the way instead of waiting until the end of the pilot period. There should also be a publication of results at the end of every pilot period, long or short, that gives us the good, bad, and the ugly so people understand why a program or a book is not or is being recommended for adoption. And I would also like to make sure that there's always inclusion of SEPTA in these councils, that we make sure that we cover all students and all their needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other? Please state your name and address.
My name is Brian Haverly. I live on Duck Farm Road. What I'd like to know is, I'd like to know if Dr. Title has another job. Specifically, I want to know if he's employed by the Cambridge Group.
We do not take comments on personnel matters or directed directly to a staff person.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask you a question. You have public comment tonight on items that are being heard directly by the school board. The school board, if I understand it, is also taking a vote. The Board of Education, I should say, is having a vote tonight on whether to renew Dr. Title's contract or not. And if I'm reading his contract correctly, he has to have the approval of the board in order to have another job or to derive any other additional income. And according to the Cambridge Group's website, he's actually employed by that organization. And I'd like to know if the board is aware of that and if they've, in fact, given him approval to have this other job. The comment I'd like to make is, what I don't understand is that when you're drawing a salary of roughly $280,000.
We do not take comments directed on individuals on our staff. So, if your comments are going to continue down this vein, I'll have to ask you to step down.
How would you propose that I address this then directly? You have an item on your agenda. Well, let's say the unnamed individual who's running the school.
We do not take comments on personnel. It's as clear and as simple as I can say that. I apologize that it may, you may want to, but we do not.
But what I don't understand is, you've allowed people to make comments previously. You have other things that were voted on tonight.
We do not take comments on personnel matters.
But what about things that are being on your agenda that are being voted on?
We do not take comments on personnel matters whether they're on our agenda for vote or not from the public. We do not. That's our practice. It's clearly stated in our handbook and in our policies.
But isn't that a suppression of people being allowed to come down and comment? Isn't that an important portion of this, the public being involved in what's going on?
And again, we're not engaged in conversation during public comment. We're just hearing comments from the public, but we do not take comments on personnel matters from the public. So, please, I don't know how many more times I can say that. May I ask you to step back?
So, the board's not going to address whether he has another job?
No, we are not addressing your concerns at this time.
Despite the fact that it's on the agenda, it's 11.
May I ask you to step back? Thank you. Any other public comments or petitions?
Lauren O'Brien, 104 Edison Avenue. With regards to the pilot program, what is outlined seems very vague. There's not a lot of details. I think that's what got us to the position we are right now with the pilot program for algebra. And I would like to see before we depart from something that's been decided upon, there's a lot more detail because it seems like there's a lot of gray area and, you know, we'll use a book, we won't use a book. It's too vague. As the parents and taxpayers, we need more information, and we need, we need to give, there has to be more guidance, and there has to be more policies, and they need to be adhered to. And if they're not spelled out clearly, it makes it difficult for everyone to do their job, and it leaves the parents with expectations that are unfulfilled, and it leaves students in a mess. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comments from the public? Hearing none. On to open board comment. Any open board comment before we go into executive session?
Yeah, I'd be happy to address the issue the gentleman brought up. I have not worked for any other outside organization, taken any pay from any outside organization since I've worked here. Before I came here, I was enlisted with the Strategic Planning Organization as an associate, but I have not done any work for them, no compensation at all, since I've been employed here. And had I wished to do so, I would have brought it to the board for approval.
This contract and prior contracts have allowed superintendents to do outside work, and this particular contract is with the approval of the board, and Dr. Title has been in compliance with that since he has been here. Now, for the executive session, we will be convening to the superintendent's conference room, but we will be returning this, to this room to close the meeting in public session. So, those of you who wish to stay around, feel free to do so. Dr. Title is not able to forecast interest rates. I can't forecast how much time it will be before we get back in this room, but we will reconvene to this room to close the meeting. So, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education convene to executive session to discuss superintendent evaluation. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Mrs. Brand, Mrs. Iacono, all in favor?
Aye.
Raise your hand, say aye. It's unanimous. We're convened into executive session. Okay. It's 10:43, and we're back in public session to consider an act on two motions regarding the superintendent of schools' contract. I'll put the recommended motion on. This is a personnel matter, so the matter will be discussed within the board. We don't take public comment on personnel matters, but we do take action in public on personnel matters. So, the recommended motion is that the Fairfield Board of Education enter into a contract of employment with Dr. David G. Title as superintendent of schools for the period July 1st, 2013, through June 30th, 2016, on the same terms as set forth in the 2012-15 contract, except the base salary for each year will be as for the 2012-13-year contract unless otherwise negotiated between the parties. Do I have a motion? Mr. Carey has moved, and Mrs. Iacona has seconded, and as we know, the second motion will deal just with the base salary. Do we have comments from board members on the contract? Mr. Fattabean.
Just a real quick comment, hopefully quick. This particular item, for me, gave me some issues because of the history of the structure of the board and that this is not an evaluation, this is just a contract extension. And the problem that I've had internally is that in our prior structure, we had a six-term Board of Ed, each member had six years as a term, and every election cycle, three members would be elected and three would rotate off. The problem I have is sort of the structure of the charter. I always believe that the, the charter now has a four-year term with four members rotating in one election cycle and five members rotating in another election cycle. I never liked that change. I always believed that the board should be more stable and that an election cycle that had three members off or possibly off for, up for election was a better, more stable Board of Ed. So, my, the problem that I've had is that because of that charter change, I think it created problems for the board as a body, as a structure. And I wrestled with this as whether or not it would be prudent, knowing there'd be changes in the future, whether to do this. But I, on balance, I believe I'd support this and advocate for a change in the charter by other means. But that's the sole and only problem I had with this. It is not an evaluation. It is just the prudence of extending a term when you're not required in view of all the factors. But anyway, I just want, I just wanted people to know that I did struggle with this and for no reasons of evaluation but of the structural nature of the charter, and I indicated what my preference would be.
And your struggle with the charter predates this. It is from the very beginning.
I never liked it.
Any other comments from board members? Mr. Liu.
Thank you. We currently, as a board, have before us what I believe is a very serious allegation by the state that needs to be sorted out. We need to go through this hearing and understand what it means and know the outcome of it. And because of that, I can't vote right now for whether or not we should extend the contract or not. I think it would not be prudent to move forward until we understand better where we stand as a board. And I feel it's very important that, as a board, we think about these kind of decisions and not just always push forward. So, tonight, I'm going to abstain.
Thank you. Mrs. Brand.
I agree with Mr. Liu. I felt that this is a pending litigation that I am uncomfortable at this time to vote, so I, too, will be abstaining.
Thank you. I will be supporting this contract in a year where about 28 initiatives got completed, 12 personal commitments that the superintendent makes to this board in terms of his expectations, his personal expectations. We survived a tough budget year and a tough budget negotiation period. We've achieved support from town bodies for the Osborne Hill issues, for the Ludlow issues, for Riverfield and for Ludlow, and we have had a superintendent and his staff that he has supervised that's dealt with disasters. And so, I believe he has, we negotiated a change in health insurance that was a significant savings to this district. So, I may struggle with the charter change that creates almost built-in churning of school board members. That is an issue. But I agree with Mr. Fattabean that that's a separate issue, and so I'll be supporting this contract. Other comments that board members wish to make? Okay, if we're prepared to vote, the recommended motion is before you. All in favor, raise your arm and say aye. Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Iacono, Mr. Fattabean, Mr. Carey, any opposed? Zero abstentions. Mr. Liu and Mrs. Brand. So, the contract extension passes 7-0-2. The second motion on this issue is, the recommended motion is that the Fairfield Board of Education set the superintendent's base salary for 2013-14 at a, it's blank on the sample agenda, but at 1.75 percent, for those who, you in the audience who are writing that down, at a 1.75 percent increase over the 2012-13 base salary. Do I have a motion? Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Cannelli. Discussion among the board. Okay. Again, this is a personnel matter, so we do not take public comment on it. If the board is ready to act, all in favor of the recommended motion on the, setting the superintendent's base salary for 2013-14 at 1.75 percent, raise your hand. Mrs. Cannelli, Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Iacono, Mr. Fattabean, Mr. Carey, all opposed? Zero abstentions. Mr. Liu, Mrs. Brand. So, 7-0 and 2. We look forward to working with you as always, and any comments that you want to make, please do.
I'm extremely grateful for the board's votes tonight. It's been an incredibly challenging year on a lot of fronts. We've worked as a team through all of those challenges. I look forward to doing it in the future. I think we have a great district, and I think if we work together as a team going forward, it'll be an even greater district. So, I appreciate the support, and so does the staff, for whom I have everything to thank for why so many positive things do happen in this school district from dawn to dusk and sometimes beyond. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you. The recommended motion to adjourn?
Some.
Mrs., Mr. Carey, and Mrs. Iacono, all in favor, unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.